Our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Okay, we're gonna get started. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for hosting us out here tonight. We're gonna start with a roll call, please. Samasco.
Here.
Tommyan.
Here.
Hydeman.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Graytop.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Please stand for the question.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
What I'd like to do is addition or change, yeah, or revise, and I'd like to have a cancellation of the budget workshop and move that to 10R under new business. Support?
10R.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda with the direction of support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four, the minutes of the previous meeting, items A and B.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the minutes of the August 15, 2013 commission meeting and the September 5, 2013 standing committee meetings be approved and filed.
Support? Any discussion on any of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five, there's no proclamations. Item number six, consent agenda, item A through J.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda this evening consisting of items 6A through 6J.
Second?
Any discussion on any of these items at all? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven, reports of standing in special committees. Gonna start with Mr. Graytop over here.
I have nothing. Take a pass.
Okay. Mr. Rushing? On the desk. Sir Samasco?
No report.
Sir Tommyan?
Have nothing this evening.
Howard?
I have something. I just kinda wanna point out something. I was up at the Michigan Association of Counties' summer conference, and I picked up some information regarding Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant, and we will be approving the purchase of the 3.275 acres, of which we received $75,000 from Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, and we're matching that with our park and rec millage.
This is regarding the Riverwalk.
The Riverwalk.
In Port Huron.
And that enabled us to receive a $1 million Fish and Wildlife grant to restore that river wetlands area. And we're also acting on another Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant to purchase some waterfront property down in Clay Township in Bill Graytop's area, and as I looked through the information, they were dispensing. One thing I found very interesting, as everyone, I'm pretty sure everyone in our county knows, we have a park and rec millage in which we, the county, take 75% of the millage, and then the remaining 25% are returned back to local communities for their park and recreational needs. St. Clair County has had 32 projects funded by the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grants to the tune of $14 million. Now, because we have the millage and we can make the matches, we get this extra money. MacComb County, we have about 160,000 residents. MacComb County, with over a million, has received 21 projects for a total of $7.5 million. So I think the voters need to be commended for investing in our park and rec and knowing that, you know, we've taken those dollars and we've really stretched them, big time.
Howard, I would think that the Times Herald, that would be something, I thought you would have the Times Herald put out, that's something that the citizens should be aware of. It's really good information. I don't know if that's something Bill or you might be.
Yeah, I know, just, I think you probably have a sheet that shows all the townships I'm showing and what they've received. What's the timeframe on that? What, the period, you say 32 projects?
From the inception, which was 1978 through 2011, and since I've been a park and rec commissioner, just off the top of my head, I could probably name at least six or seven million dollars in grants that we've gotten in the last 11 years.
And our millage rolls around again when, Howard?
I wanna say 2016.
Just, it's good to just punch these up and keep it out there as they come along because it's some very impressive numbers.
Very impressive. And again, the voters need to be commended for their solid support of that millage.
Good, good information. Anything else, Howard?
That's all.
Okay, I'm gonna take a pass. We're gonna move on to item number eight, citizens wishing to address board. Are there any citizens? Ken?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. I guess my comments would be, being same old Ken Harris.
You want to?
You know, last week, there was a celebration up to Thomas Edison Shores in doing some of the things that benefit Port Huron and the county. I guess my disappointment during the commemoration last week was some of the comments of some of the people that talked to the public. To say I'm disappointed with the comments last week, I assure them. To say that the people of Port Huron Township and Marysville Township care less about their votes than the previous county commissioner is, I thought, very disappointing, that comment to be used there. The purpose of that was to commemorate the culinary school and the Doubletree. I think that we digress when we address people that the reason that they should have voted because the previous county commissioner started the support for the county convention center. I think that, I think we just took a step backward as far as county commissioners and letting the public think that we don't care. I mean, if somebody has a different set of opinions, I think we should recognize that. And from what I heard there, that the people weren't recognized and appreciated. Another thing that maybe you can, maybe you can tell me some of the questions that come up. I was talking to some people who were in the, basically, the building trades business and things like that, and I know I got some information today about the bond issue. I was informed that these guys had told me, well, they're not getting any of the work because the bond is so high, and I don't, if you can elaborate on, I got some information today that basically said the bonds are set at 5%, and that they haven't been done yet. That's, I'm talking about the bank. And I know if you've got any further information, when it's gonna happen and what, but from what the documents I see, the bond is not, not out of line with previous bonds. So, thank you for listening.
Yeah, I'm sure we can probably address them a little bit later because I do wanna address, and normally, we don't respond to the public, but I received a call from the Times Herald today, from Tom Walker, and it was per, I guess, Ken, some of your comments. And granted, it was Cliff Schrader, I'm not gonna take it out of text, but quote-unquote that Jeff Bowman said, "The people from Port Huron were too stupid to support the Marysville people, Marysville and Port Huron people were too stupid to know something about vote." Now, I have to take offense to that because those comments were not said, and I think if you ask anybody, I forwarded the email to my fellow commissioners, my fellow commissioners that were at that groundbreaking ceremony, correct me if I'm wrong, and the comments that you're saying were made, I don't, I...
I've got the email with the language, if you wanted, I wasn't there, but if you wanted the exact language from Walker, I've got it.
Yeah, why don't you read it to us?
It says, "Jeff, Cliff Schrader wrote the following about last week's Port Huron Waterfront Rebirth Celebration, is it accurate? Quote, 'Port Huron City Councilman Ken Harris said he was also shocked when St. Clair County Chairman Jeff Bowman thanked former county commissioner Terry London for his support for the project. Bowman said London lost his seat because the people of Marysville and Port Huron Township were too stupid to understand the project, and you wrote back, 'Not true. If you want the facts, call me.'" That was the...
I spoke to him, but just as the other fellow commissioners that were there.
I'd just like to say I was there, I was sitting in the second row, and you did not make a comment like that about the voters in Port Huron.
And I was in the front row even closer than you, and I don't have hearing. And he did not say anything like that. He did thank Terry for his support, and he mentioned that Terry paid the ultimate price for supporting it. That means he lost the election.
So, did Mr. Harris get a second hand, or Mr. Harris heard it, thinks he did?
I slipped next to Mr. Kaufman when I heard it, so...
I...
And I meant, and...
Always a debate.
The word stupid was not used, I can tell you that, but it was...
And I'm not gonna debate what I said.
Basically, I was next to Terry, and he was really appreciative of your comments that you made, and your comment essentially was, this, in some communities, was a highly controversial decision that we made as commissioners, and you complimented Terry for standing up for his support with this very controversial issue. And because it was so controversial, he paid the ultimate sacrifice, and that was to lose his seat.
Okay. Very good. We're gonna move on. Item number nine, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before us at this time? Item number 10, we're gonna do the introduction, township officials. If it seems like we go through this stuff fairly quick, what happens in our structure of the county board, we have committee meetings where, two weeks prior to, we actually have these different items that we discuss at length, and then we actually move these things on to the full board. So if it seems like we're kinda moving some of this, through this stuff quick, we've talked about these issues, they've been well-vented, and then we move them on two weeks later. So, David, you wanna do an introduction for us?
Yeah, if I could, being the county commissioner for District 6, and I represent, Casco, I do appreciate it, like I stated before, having us here, and Supervisor Bill Grebman, if you have anything that you'd like to ask us, or I would like you to also introduce your other board members that are present tonight, appreciate them being here.
Okay, well, welcome to sunny Casco Township. We're glad to have you, and we do have a few folks here, a couple are out sick, are out of town, but we have the township treasurer, Colleen Stone, who's over by our wall. To her right is trustee Joe Stevens, and to her left is a member of the planning commission and chair of the ZDA, Wayne Butler. And certainly welcome you, we're glad the weather was so good, and you know, I don't do it in the winter, in the spring when the roads are bad, so you get a good, roads are nice and dry, pretty smooth, and we're glad you're here, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't know, we don't get an opportunity to come out, Mike, if you have anything you guys would like to ask the board, if I could. Yeah, you know? You have anything?
Welcome, and thanks for coming here.
Okay. Moving on, item number eight, the approval of county dispersments.
At this time, I'd move to approve the county of St. Clair dispersments for the month of August 2013 in the amount of $20,604,183.
Support? Discussion? Roll call? Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number B, Resolution 13-19, endorsement of the St. Clair County Health Department's strategic plan.
At this time, I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 13-19, endorsement of the St. Clair County Health Department's strategic plan.
Support? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, item number C, the 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the fiscal year 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $12,436.
Support? Discussion? Roll call? Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number D, the 2014 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program application and proposed budget.
At this time, I would move to approve the year 2014 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program application, total amount of $439,568.43.
Discussion on this at all? Roll call, please. Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number E, the letter of the agreement with Community Mental Health for psychiatric services.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the letter of agreement between the 31st Circuit Court Family Division and Community Mental Health for psychiatric service coverage for the day treatment night watch program in an annual amount not to exceed $32,400.
Support? Discussion on this? Just as a side note, I see that MacComb approved the contract, and the juveniles were moving forward with all that, so... Roll call, please. Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number F, the aviation fuel contract with Eastern Aviation. Kathy?
Commissioner, I need to apologize to you for not attending September 5 committee meeting to answer your questions. I was at the Office of Aeronautics in Lansing to secure grant monies for 2014. So just lightly, I'd like to go over what the contract incentives were to kinda answer your questions. The Aernav Gold Advertising basically is just basically an industry standard advertisement. We've never had that advertisement in the past because we didn't provide that service. We didn't provide that type of service. So they're going to give us that advertisement for five years, at no cost, through this contract. The AeroClass Rewards Program is basically an incentive for the pilots themselves to purchase Shell fuel at St. Clair County and National Airport, meaning that as they land there, the bottom line is that it's the pilots' decision themselves whether or not they buy fuel from here, they go to Pontiac, wherever they go. So this program itself will give the pilots personal points towards purchase. It'll help Aviation Express sell fuel to you personally as the pilot itself. So what happens is, after the, if, you know, we can barter with them, if they are a member of this program, they have to be a member of it, they say, okay, fine, they're purchasing Shell fuel. Once that point-of-sale system is done, it will pull then, this point-of-sale system will then pull it up and say, "Are you a member of this AeroClass Rewards?" He will then say, yes, no. You put his code number in there, just must fly Krogers or anywhere in that manner, and he personally will receive these points. So there's no, there's nobody from the airport that will receive them, there's no, there's no random giving them to anybody, it's directly towards the pilot himself with the incentive that, yes, he will buy Shell branded fuel from, from the county of St. Clair. This system, obviously, is an awesome system to promote the fuel system. If, in the event that we do get to the point where we have sold 100,000 gallons worth of fuel, and we have used our 100,000 free points that they have given us, then at that point, then we will have the option, and I will bring that to you, if and when we get to that point, we will have the option to purchase more Shell reward points to disperse. There are two cents, there are two cents a Shell, or two cents a point for us to purchase them. But, you know, we could, we could run through these 100,000 points within the next couple months, or it could take us two years. You know, with a little luck, we roll through them in two months, and I'm here January 1st asking you to purchase some more of these. But that's what that, what that program is for. So I didn't know if you had any more questions in regards to that, or...
We need a motion?
Uh, we can ask some questions.
I just, I didn't know if you had any more questions.
Yes, I appreciate everybody's help, because, you know, at the last meeting, I had lots of questions on this contract. Appreciate Terry's effort, Carl helped out, I talked to Bill Kaufman, Terry Fletcher's changed a lot of the wording here, because there were some issues in there, and one, again, with the signs, I brought that up to you, and then it's gonna probably require your approval, Bill Kaufman's approval, when he signs prior to, that language wasn't in there, and it's changed quite a bit of it, and I'm happy with the contract now.
So the DealerLink, the DealerLink Passor thing there, again, is another marketing tool that they're giving us for one year. Basically, what it does, it will give Aviation Express a tracking device for inbound so that they can provide the service. They'll know exactly what they want, what they're used to, and what they, type of aircraft, the whole type thing. It will also give him the marketing tool to basically track that aircraft to see what other airports he goes to and the service he provides. That is only going to be for, for one year. I talked to him today, it's $330 a month after that. So I talked to Mr. Schreiner this morning, and what we'll do is, we'll use this system pretty heavily for a year, and with a little luck, we can get what we need from that, and because $330 a month for this is pretty, is a lot of money. But we do have it for no cost for one year. The Shell Aviation Fuel Signs are basically the Shell, the Shell logo, it will say Shell, it says Shell Aviation underneath it with their logo on it. I do, I have sent, I have approved them, I have sent them to Kimball Township, filed for their permit for them, Neil Erickson has not gotten back with me yet, but they do have the signed permit for that. So basically, there will be nothing inappropriate at all on those signs, it just will say Shell, the Shell logo with Aviation Fuel underneath it. So if you, if you want me to, once we get that processed, then I can send it to you, Bill, for your approval.
Kathy did share sketches of the sign, and I'm sure it's the same material that he sent to Kimball Township.
Yep. So I just kinda wanna give you a little bit of update because we do have an awful lot of awesome stuff going on. Commissioner Bowman, you had mentioned that the fuel sales are up 16%. Someone had mentioned that, you know, is it economy-driven, or is it, you know, the new FBO? It's hard to tell because of the summer months. It probably is economy-driven. On the same hand, we have a new FBO, as you said, and we've got local-based aircraft pilots who are now finally purchasing fuel from home, and that's, that's gonna drive that 16% right there. We have, Mr. Schreiner has collected, started collecting ramp fees, which we never, we never collected before, because there, again, it wasn't a service that we provided. We, he and I have started to go through the rates and fees of the airport because they were not updated, I think, 2001, they haven't been updated. So we've been working on that, going through, you know, the rents, the whole thing, and we probably are gonna bring that to you within the next month or so with the set date that those will go into effect for January 2014. So I will back with you on that. You had mentioned John Wheeler, the Orient Construction, that's, that's building the Doubletree, the construction for the Doubletree and the Convention Center. He's landed there twice this month in his jet personally, purchased fuel, paid our ramp fees, paid our landing fees. So that's the kind of, I guess, the economy-driven stuff that's gonna help support us, you know, the more, the more the county grows, the more the airport will grow. With Ron Marsh's support, we have started to clean out the premium hangar, the climate control hangar, my old office, and started moving it to Ash Drive with the goal of November 1st to get that stuff so that we can get that hangar cleaned up and start marketing that for what Mr. Rush Rider calls the heavy iron. So that's, that's working out really well. As I mentioned, I was at the board commissioners meeting, or board commissioners, that's what I meant now, the Office of Aeronautics.
That's the building, before we go further, that's that building that we got back, just...
The blue one?
Well, the silver one, that, you and I went inside of that building.
Oh, okay.
That's where all that hazmat, some of the cold storage stuff, that's where that's gonna get moved to.
And it's, Commissioner Hydeman, it's all been cleaned, it's, we're ready to start moving.
I was, I was quite impressed with what it was.
I've been able to use community service program quite a lot.
Excellent.
It's working out good. So September 5th, Office of Aeronautics meeting, I have some good mixed report.
I'm gonna rebox.
You shouldn't want to try first for that.
As I had told you before, in 2013, March of 2013, we were told, the county of St. Clair was told, that we had to justify runway 422's current length and current width before they would move any further and give us any more grant monies towards our ILS runway. So when I was at the meeting at the Office of Aeronautics, they basically gave us a great news that because of our Phase 1 of our new airport layout plan, that Phase 1 totally justified our current length and our current width. So we don't need to use any grant monies towards that survey, and we can relax about that, so that was good news. They also, which has been quite a little bit of a challenge for me, but they finally did approve for 2014 the design process for the taxiways, the taxi streets, and the industrial park. So we're gonna move forward on getting them, because you know how terrible they are. So for 2014, the design process for the industrial park taxi streets, 2015 will be the actual rehabilitation of those taxi streets. So it actually was a very successful meeting for me, so, there again, I apologize that I, that I wasn't here. So I don't know if anybody had any questions?
You know, we were running that fiber optics out there. I haven't heard, how's that coming?
It's all done.
All done?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yep, it's all settled and works very well. Yeah, it's done.
Is the fiber optics gonna move to the industrial park, or is it just gonna stop at the airport and stay there for now?
Bill and I had just had a meeting last Monday that, basically, he's instructed me to kinda just, to send a letter to the industrial park tenants to say, "Are you even interested in this, or are you satisfied with what you have?" And so we're gonna do a little survey there again with them to see whether or not they are satisfied with what they have, or if they are interested in it too. But I'll get back with you as soon as we find out, too.
Okay, any other questions at all, Kathy?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that the Board of Commissioners approve the aviation fuels contract with Eastern Aviation for a term from September 20, 2013, to September 19, 2018.
Support? More discussion?
I would like to thank Kathy for your response to our questions. The, I'm not really used to all this airport terminology and, or Shell's marketing materials, and your explanation is very helpful.
Thank you.
I also like to compliment Bill and the staff and the board, I mean, bringing this contractor on, this new FBO, as part of this whole airport improvement process, has really been a plus for the county.
It's a long time coming.
Yeah, well, truthfully, we've been on for FBO searches three different occasions, if I'm not mistaken, we didn't have respondents before and stuff, and we, timing was right for us, and timing was right for him to be quite on us, so it matched up, and hearing a lot of good things, so...
Good, a lot of great, from everybody. Homeland Security got a big hand in this, and it's just been a plus, everybody working together, and your efforts in this on the contract and everything, it's been a very good year for the airport.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Roll call, thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number G, the Bluewater Riverwalk Acquisition Grant Purchase Agreement.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the purchase agreement with Atchison Ventures LLC for 2.75 acres of land for the Riverwalk Expansion Project.
Discussion on this, I think Howard covered it a little bit earlier, and we talked about previous...
I did, but I was remiss. Atchison Ventures are contributing $200,000 toward the purchase of this, too, in addition to the $75,000 from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund and the $75,000 from Park and Rec Millage. And I need to give them... And, and I need to give them credit.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item number H, the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Proposed Service Agreement.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the professional service contract with Spicer Group Incorporated for Stormwater Permit Coordination Services in the amount not to exceed $40,000 with an expiration of 9/30/2014.
Support.
Any discussion on this?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item number I, the Septic Tank Appeals Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that the Board of Commissioners appoint to the Septic Tank Appeals Board the following individuals: Artie Bryson, Clay Township Supervisor; Bob McCoy, Ira Township Supervisor; Bruce Christie, Columbus Township Supervisor; William Rummanap, thank you, Casco Township Supervisor; and Mike Apple, Virchfield Township Supervisor, each, for the remainder of a four-year term expiring December 31, 2016, and to appoint Tom Kaufman, Professional, for the remainder of a two-year term expiring on December 31, 2013.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number J, the Board of Canvassers appointments.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to accept the nominations provided for the Board of Canvassers and to cast ballots.
Second? I guess a question currently is Dean on there, and currently...
Rachel.
Rachel.
One for Dean, one for Rachel. One for Dean, one for Rachel. One for Dean, one for Rachel. One for Dean, one for Rachel. Six for Rachel Salon, and six for Dean Bolgera.
Do we have to do a motion to accept that?
So, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. The four, I'm sorry, the Workforce Development Board appointment.
This time, I would move to appoint Ann Foster, representing the private sector, to the Workforce Development Board for the remainder of a two-year term expiring 8/11/14.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item number L, the Salary and Wage Policy.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the salary and wages policy.
Support.
Okay. Discussion, talked about it at the last meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number N, the 2014 Secondary Road Grant.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the fiscal year 2014 Secondary Road Patrol Grant application in the amount of $136,836.
Support.
Discussion, just an application. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number N, the North Channel Property with Michigan Natural Trust Fund Acquisition Grant Application.
That was the other one I was talking about.
Do I have a motion on the second? I would move...
Aye.
Okay, how we...
I would move the adoption of Resolution 1321 to amend the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant for the purchase of 9.4 acres of property along the North Channel of the St. Clair River.
Support.
You want to talk about it a little, Mr. Greatop?
There's a, it's a very interesting piece of property. It wedges itself between the Algenack Harbor Club recreational facility and the DNR launch site, which is down there, called the North Channel Access Launch Site, and it's right in between, touches up to both those properties. 9.2 acres, right on the North Channel, shallow bank, mostly sand-bottom area, would be good for swimming. There's a small piece of wetland on the property. That wetland has been drawn into a, kind of a conceptual drawing, that that could become a swimming area, where the kids could swim in that area, as well as out into the other area. Talk of putting a canoe kayak launch system in there, a couple of pavilions, and it is right directly across the street from the Bridge to Bay Trail, so you would have access that way by merely crossing the highway.
Just a comment, our motion here is, of course, to modify the grant request, and essentially, the way it works is Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, they look over your application, and they score points toward the viability of that application. And then they notify you if you'd like to up your points. These are the things you can do. And so our Park and Rec Director has made those necessary changes to increase our, our score, thereby enhancing our chances of getting the grant. And Mark has been doing this for a long time, so I'm pretty optimistic we're, we're going to be successful.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number O, the Medicare Advantage Renewal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the Medicare Advantage renewal as presented with an implementation date of January 1st, 2014.
Second?
Discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Item number P, Resolution 1322, the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Circuit Court Family Division Supervisors.
This time, I would move to adopt that Resolution 1322 ratifying the collective bargaining agreement, 31st Judicial Circuit Court Family Division Supervisors Association.
Support.
Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number Q, 1323, Collective Bargaining Agreement with Probate Court Clerical Employees.
This time, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 1323 ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the 31st Judicial Circuit Court Family Division Clerical Employees, TPOAM.
Support.
Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number R, the, it's just, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Item R, just that's cancellation of our workshop budget workshop.
Chairman, at this time, I would move to cancel the 9/26/13 Board of Commissioners' Budget Workshop.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 11, Administrator's Report.
I'd actually like to start with mithemting an opportunity to share with you the status of the development of the 2014 General Fund Budget.
We have received everything we need from all of the departments, so we will be able to present a balanced budget to you next month. We're just working through all the numbers and getting it in the system, and then we'll be putting it through our budget model to see what 2015 looks like as well. But all the departments have given us their proposals, and they all look very good.
So, thank you very much, Kerry, for the work that you did to pull this together, and we'll certainly send a thank you out to the other elected officials and department heads as well that participated in this.
Give you a lot of credit, because we used to want to kill each other six, seven years ago, so you guys were able to get it together, I didn't think you were going to be able to pull it off at the beginning of the year, but we'll believe you in a hour.
Yeah, well, you know...
I'm sure it's our chairman's guiding hand, assistant, and stuff, yeah.
He needs to sit a couple of days. You know, considering the fiscal challenges that we've had for, let's say, the last five, well, five years, my first few years on the board, we were able to give our employees pay raises. And I would like to, to see us at least, hopefully, be able to go back, because they've been real troopers in this, and, and to, to be able to give pay raises.
We've had budget reductions every year since I've been there, I've been there seven years, and we have budget reductions every year in the billions of dollars. Nine for me, first year it was a couple percent raises, and the last eight it's been, like you said, so.
If I could, I appreciate everybody's efforts. You work with other people, and you include them in the conversation, it's been a big plus. Not everybody's been happy during the discussions, but we got where we needed to get it, and it benefited the whole county.
Okay, I just want to thank all the commissioners that attended the joint Planning Commission meeting yesterday evening. I think the Planning Commission got a good sense of direction on how the board would like them to move forward on a number of items, and they will be coming back to the board and sharing more information with you in the future. The criminal justice, in spite of the fact that we do have a balanced budget, the Criminal Justice Budget Work Group will continue meeting. There's a number of initiatives, new initiatives, new programs that they've been working on. Our clerk, Mr. DeBoyer, is a part of that, and has introduced a number of very creative and innovative ideas that some of the other folks involved have clung on to, so I think you will see some good things come out of that group, and we're hoping that even after we've got a budget approved by the board, that they'll continue meeting in the future to talk about what they can do to work simultaneously to ensure that all the needs of inmates are provided for, and that the system works as efficiently as possible. So, last week, I made a presentation to the Landlords Association, and they wanted to talk a little bit about the state of the county. We did cover that, they were a little bored with that real quick, and all they really wanted to talk about was the Convention Center. They had a lot of questions, there was not a single negative comment that came out of the group, it was all very positive, but it was obvious that they were just very thirsty for information, and perhaps hearing the, the real truth about what was going on, and what kind of commitments have and have not been made. So it was a very good meeting. And I'm, I'm hoping that in the future, they'll ask the county, some of the county department heads, and maybe other elected officials to meet with them. It was a good group.
Bill, what was this group again?
The Port Huron Area Landlords Association. I can tell you, before I went on, there was an official from the city of Port Huron there, and although they handled themselves very, very well, they certainly had some very tough questions to deal with. So, a, a little bit more on the airport. Kathy and Ron are working very quickly to try and seal in some of the new buildings that we have acquired. We're finding that we've got roof leaks, we've got window leaks, and we want to make sure that we protect the assets that we just acquired before the winter weather rolls in. So there's a lot of things that are going on out there right now.
These aren't the buildings we bought, these are the buildings that came back to us in back taxes.
Well, the biggest challenge has been the building that came back to us in back taxes. We have found some problems with the building that we did acquire, but they're, they're extremely minor compared to the building that we got back through unpaid taxes. So as, as many of you may not know out there, a lot of the buildings that are out at the area industrial park, the property itself is owned by the county and it's simply leased to someone to use. So when they decide to move, or leave, or in this particular case, the property was foreclosed on because of taxes, the county owns that building again, and obviously, before we can reuse it, we've got to make sure that it's back in shape. So this particular building was in pretty rough shape. Kathy and Ron have been very creative in getting the work done, most of it so far, at no cost to us. We used primarily the, the work release program to get the place cleaned up. The last thing I want to talk a little bit about and address questions that were raised tonight was regarding the Convention Center, and I guess I'll take care of that right off the bat. When we originally bid the ballroom, and keep in mind, the, the only portion of this project that has been under construction so far that is owned solely by the county has been the ballroom. Even the utilities, the site work, all of that work has been jointly owned by the county and by the other partners on the property. The ballroom is the only thing so far that is under construction that only we are involved with. Some of you may recall that we bid the project earlier this year, I believe it was late spring that we put the project out for bid, and unfortunately, we did not receive a single response to those bids. We did advertise heavily, locally. I did meet with the labor unions at the Labor Hall to let them know the project would be coming on. They received copies of the bid notices. Some of you individually ensured that local contractors were made aware of the opportunity, and unfortunately, we did not receive a single bid. The project...
This is the existing ballroom that currently exists in hotel, nothing to do with the new construction piece that's going on.
Correct, just the renovation of the existing ballroom. We are now in the process of putting together a new bid package. We hope to be getting that out in the next couple of weeks. We will be just as aggressive as we were the first time in trying to secure proposals from local contractors. One of the issues that Councilmember Harris brought up, we have been made aware of, could have been one of the reasons that some local contractors didn't bid, and that was the requirement of a bid bond. The Board of Commissioners, current purchasing policies require a bid bond of 5% for any project that is in excess of $100,000. So in this particular case, they would have had to post a bid bond. We expect that the value of the project is going to be a little over $400,000, so there would have been a fairly substantial bid bond. However, we did bid the project out as separate trades, so in other words, if you were an electrician, you could bid just for the electrical work. If you were a drywaller, you could bid just for the drywalling and painting work. If you were someone that was involved in laying floors or carpeting, you could bid just on the carpet. Or you could bid as a general contractor and do the entire project. We did that in order to reduce the value of some of those contracts and purposely give local contractors an opportunity to bid. In spite of that, we still didn't receive any bids. Now, we don't know if that was the only reason. We don't do know, many of the contractors we spoke to that we thought were interested, they said, "Look, we've got so much work going on right now and lined up. I don't have enough of a crew to pull to work on this project. I've got enough work to do to keep us busy, and I don't have the time to try and hire more staff, so I'm not going to bother bidding on, on the..." I don't have enough of a crew to pull to work on this project. I've got enough work to do to keep us busy, and I don't have the time to try and hire more staff, so I'm not going to bother bidding on the project." That, we think, was one of the primary reasons that we didn't get local bids.
Too large for local contractors' buildings?
Too large. Many of our local contractors have really staffed down. You know, it's been a tough couple of years, and a lot of our local contractors that were here five, six years ago don't even exist today. And those that do exist are pretty lean, and as a result, when it comes time to take on a big job, they've either got to staff up real quick or they just pass on the job. And unfortunately, many of our skilled tradesmen who haven't been working for the last three or four years, they haven't stuck around. They've left for places where they can get work. So, I'm aware of a local tradesman that would have liked to have been on this job, didn't have the staff. Since then, he's tried to pull in some folks that retired from his business that are still skilled, still licensed to work in that area, but they're retired and they say, "You know, I worked three or four days, eight hours a day, hard day, in this case pulling wire, and I don't want to do this anymore, that's why I'm retired." So, we are having a real tough time in this county trying to build back a substantial pool of skilled tradespeople.
Does this have the potential to increase the overall cost for that project bill or no?
It may increase the cost, it may require us to use contractors from outside of the area as well. So, we are going to rebid it, and we're going to use much the same process or procedure to rebid, and we'll see what we come up with. We'll report back to the Board and let you know, and we know exactly what day those bids will go out, and when they're due, we'll let you know, so if you have people you can get in touch with, please feel free to do so.
Are projected cost allocations will still be in place, and you suspect that'll still work, what we've projected is the cost for that?
Yes, yes, we do.
Sorry, Bill. Will the 5%, the 5% bond that we have, is that standard for the county to use that 5% or have we put that in place just for this project?
No, that's standard for the county and all of our projects. I have, however, asked Corporation Council to look at the requirement and let us know. The county policy actually says a bid bond or other type of security. So, he is involved and oversees a lot of construction projects for a lot of municipalities, so I've asked him to provide some advice, what other forms of security might we be able to use that would be a little easier for some of the smaller contractors to secure. So, when we come back to you, well, in the future, we'll be talking a little bit more about this, and if we feel there's some other type of security, we'll let you know about that.
Have we ever had any blocking before from anybody about the 5% bond that you're mounting?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I just want to make the comment, in my work life before, I've been involved with projects where a contractor has gone bankrupt, and even if you have a bid bond, it can be, it can delay a project for a year, because if you, if it gets into bankruptcy court, you can essentially have a significant delay.
Navigation in bankruptcy court just delays a project?
Yeah, and I had the unfortunate circumstance of rebuilding a bridge and the bridge had been demolished, and then the contractor went bankrupt, and it was the only bridge over the railroad in that area of the city, and there were some merchants that were dire straits as a result of that. The construction was actually delayed for a whole year, and it got built.
The bid bond doesn't protect that anyway.
No, but people who are going to bond somebody, they take a look at their finances.
You can't produce a bid bond, you're, if you can produce, you're less likely to be bankrupt.
I just want to make it clear that that was a bridge over a railroad, not a railroad bridge.
The railroad was the problem then.
So, bottom line, we continue to review what could have caused local contractors to decide not to bid originally on this project, and we'll do what we can to try and encourage and entice contractors and to put in a proposal this time around. Other issues regarding the Convention Center, the site work has been substantially completed, there's just one, there's a, what's called a swirl separator, it's a device that you use at the end of the storm sewer line to try and reduce the amount of pollution from runoff that ends up in the system. That is the only thing that is left to be installed, where it was originally supposed to be located turned out to be underwater because of groundwater issues that were unknown at the time. So, we are looking and working with the city of Port Huron to relocate the swirl separator, but other than that, then all of the work on that particular contract, which went to body construction, will be completed. We are real close to having a contract with SMG in hand. We have gone back and forth a number of times with Corporation Council and with Mr. Bill Kruger.
Could you explain to the...
SMG is, sure. SMG is the venue management company that the county has selected to run and manage the day-to-day operations of the Convention Center. We're also partnering with the city of Port Huron, and the intention is that SMG, the same company, will be used to manage the day-to-day operations of McMorn Auditorium as well, and both of us, the city as well as the county, would benefit financially by using the same management company. So, that's who it is that we're trying to work out our contract with, and we hope to have that to you very soon. Our room block agreement, if you recall, our project agreement with JB Real Estate included a number of things that they had to do before we committed to the project and a number of things we had to do before we would begin construction. Their facility is now open, that was one of the conditions that they had to meet, actually it was the last condition they had to meet. The last condition that the Board of Commissioners placed on this project for us before we could get started was that a room block agreement be in place. The room block agreement is essential in getting the hotel operator to agree to set aside a block of rooms at a given rate for conventions of certain size, to ensure that we've got host facility rooms available for those who want to use the convention facility, and again, to do so and reserve them at a certain rate. So, we've got a room block agreement that has gone back and forth between Corporation Council and Mr. Kruger from CSL, the consultant we're using to assist us. We will be sending that off to SMG to review and then off to JB Real Estate once that is signed, and hopefully, we'll be in a position at that point to complete the construction and bidding documents for the new construction and get those out to bid shortly after we've got that room block agreement signed.
After the room block agreement's done, how much work is left for CSL? I know we increased his piece a little bit.
Actually, we have not. We've just been very, very stingy in using his time.
So, once that block room room is done...
We're pretty well set at that point. There may be some minor issues he may have to get involved with.
Is he going to come in with that budget on his retainment?
We believe we will.
Yes, good news.
We're looking to have this by the end of the year?
Oh, yes. Certainly, and before that, before that, yes. The, I'm not sure if all of you received a copy of Michigan Meeting Planner's Magazine, I believe it may have been in your mailboxes up at the County Administration Building. You'll notice, in spite of the fact that the city of Detroit's Convention Center is on the cover, the bulk of the magazine is actually devoted to our project, which I've been told by our local CBD.
Nice four-page article right in the center of the picture.
So, evidently, the Detroit area Chamber of Commerce is not real happy, but that's the way it goes. I guess we have a more exciting project than they do. So, let's see. I think that's it. If you have any questions about what's been going on, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you, otherwise, that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the Administrator's Report as presented.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Miss Laney's business, anything that's come before us, receiving file.
This time I moved receipt of file packets that were sent to Commissioners, packets at their places, any other information presented to the Commissioners.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman?
Motion? Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Where are you, our chairman?